I want to introduce myself as the new mayor, Ron Hanegraff. I also want to introduce Jennifer Laten over on my right. She's new to the council this year. And off to my left is Janet Haglund. She's been on the council for six years. And on her side is Rob Bush, who is an incumbent who was just reelected again this year. So I just thought I'd introduce everybody and also thank the ex-mayor Jesse Preiner, who's here tonight, and Sue Wagaman for their service. And thank everybody for being here. So today is January 8th, 2025, our first meeting of the year. And you probably wonder why we have all the sheriff's deputies here. And it's a check license plates out in the front parking lot. The first thing we're going to start off with when we do every meeting is the Pledge of Allegiance. Can everyone stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The third thing on the agenda on item A is the adoption of the agenda. And I'm going to make a motion that I approve the agenda for the January 8th, 2025 city council meeting with the removal of item C8.
Does Rob whole second that motion, Ron?
Is there any discussion, any comments? Take a vote, Jennifer?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. We'll go on to the next item in the B, consent agenda. I want to make a motion that I move to approve the consent agenda as presented in the January 8th, 2025 city council packet and the supplemental bill list, which was distributed and handed out, handout to council prior to the meeting. Anybody like to second that?
I'd just like to suggest an amendment. I made a number of corrections to the August 28th city council minutes. None of them are substantial enough that we have, we can't approve it. But I just want to include that they had, there's some errors that were corrected and Jack got those this morning. So I'll second it with that amendment.
Any questions, any comments? So if I'm right, Jennifer can approve the minutes because she was-
I think it's just us three, right?
Pardon?
Just us three.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Ron, aye. We'll go on to item number C, presentations. And tonight we're glad to have half of the Anoka County Sheriff's Department here. Sheriff Weiss, if you could lead us on and, or maybe Jessica, Jessica, the lieutenant. She's our liaison to the city of Columbus. So it's your floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, council, mayor.
Good evening.
As Mayor Hanegraff said, I'm Jessica Slavik. I'm a lieutenant with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. And it's also my pleasure to be the liaison between our office and the city of Columbus. Tonight, we're going to be introducing the two Columbus deputies, one of our shift sergeants, as well as the investigator for the city of Columbus. And then I've prepared some end of year stats and some calls for service I'd like to share. But before that, I will turn it over to Sheriff Weiss for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. If you'll indulge me a couple of minutes, you have a lot of work to do, I can see. So I'll try not to take too much of your time here. But as is our tradition, there's going to be doing, or we're going to be doing introductions of the deputies that serve the citizens here of Columbus. But I also wanted to come and talk and make sure that people get to know me well because of course it's our honor to provide law enforcement services to Columbus. As I've said previously, is that there are four things that make for a good law enforcement agency. Two of them are provided by the citizens of Columbus. That is supportive elected officials and supportive citizens. So I want to thank both you, the council, and the citizens that are sitting behind me for the support that I know our deputies feel every single day because it makes a big difference in the work that they do and the service they provide to the citizens. The other two pieces that I like to call it my four-legged stool approach, but we need to have a good culture within the office. And we do, you have great characters here. My recollection is last year, we got into a little bit of joke telling almost with some of the deputies and the work that they've been doing for the citizens. And then competitive wages, which is the piece that I wanted to specifically mention to you, is that while we enjoy the support of the citizens and the council here, is that the wages that, the cost basically of this law enforcement service is getting expensive. And I know it's a big line item for you as you levy your taxes onto the citizens. But I want you to know that it's really important that we keep competitive wages for the deputies. We want to always be fully staffed and not have that be an issue. And so as you see that line item, please know that I'm an Anoka County resident myself. All my family are Anoka County taxpayers in one city or another. And we're very mindful of squeezing nickels and how important that revenue is, well, how much the taxes impacts your taxpayers. And we're very mindful of those costs. But just as you see these contracts, just know that we want to provide a competitive wage for the deputies that work here. And then the last thing I'll mention is that the biggest ticket item, if you're watching the news at all, is the replacement of the Anoka County jail. And you as elected officials actually extend a blanket invitation to you all to reach out directly to me to offer a tour to you of the existing jail. I know you're going to get questions because if we get to the stage where a bond needs to be levied on property taxes, is that it'll be a big ticket item that the taxpayers are going to be concerned about. And they're going to want to know that that money is well spent. And I want to make sure that you all, I mean, we can't practically offer a tour to every citizen, but we can do, we can offer tours to elected officials and that you can be a conduit and know the information, the backstory, so that you can be well informed when people ask you about that. So please just keep that in mind as the year progresses because we're moving forward. It's incremental process, but we're moving forward on replacing the existing jail. So you're actually welcome to ask me a question anytime, but if you don't mind, I think I'll turn it back over to Lieutenant Slavik to keep, keep moving.
Oh, thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
All right. Well, then without further delay, we'll start with the two gentlemen on the left. I have Deputy Matthew Vertina and Deputy Daniel Gruy.
Hello, Mayor, council, members of the public. I'm Deputy Matthew Vertina, Matt. I've been a deputy, I suppose I should face you guys. I've been a deputy for the past 11 months and have been with the sheriff's office as explorer since 2016 in high school, reserve, CSO, and then finally a deputy from Ramsey. And I went to St. Clair State and got a bachelor's of law enforcement. I forgot the exact word, but bachelor's degree in law enforcement. And I'm just really happy to be in the city of Columbus. I chose to stay in Columbus for this upcoming year because I like the city, I like the calls for service, and I like the fact that some days we're going similar to call to call and some days I can be more proactive trying to find warrants and other such needed law enforcement activity in the city. And I like just being close to the freeway, having busy areas, and then also just going throughout the residential neighborhoods and making sure everything is as it should be. I don't have anything else, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Matt. What about Dan?
My name is Daniel Gruy. I was born and raised in Ramsey, Minnesota. I went to Hennepin Technical College where I got my associates for law enforcement. As I was doing that, I was also a CSO here for three years. This is my first year as a deputy and my first city contract for Columbus. So I'm happy to be here and there's a lot to learn from me and I can't wait.
Well, thank you for being our deputies. I appreciate it. Thank you for your service.
All right. Then to the right of the sheriff, we have Chief Deputy Bill Jacobson, Investigator Sean Merritt, and Sergeant Matthew O'Connor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Again, my name is Bill Jacobson. I serve as your chief deputy. And as the sheriff mentioned, we're absolutely honored and proud to serve the city of Columbus.
Hello, I'm Sean Merritt. I'm investigator with the sheriff's office for, I've been with the sheriff's office for 23 years now. In the past 12 years, investigator, and all of those 12 actually with the city of Columbus. So I'm very familiar with it and I enjoy continuing to do it. And another year towards retirement, so.
And my name is Matt O'Connor. I've been with the sheriff's office for 11 years, spent the previous five, or sorry, five years as a canine handler and the last two as a patrol sergeant within the patrol division.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions for the staff?
Does the sheriff, does every city have their own investigator or is, do they take up so many cities?
No, each city can contract to have an investigative time. There's some, I would call it blanket coverage, but a city can add that kind of service to the contract if they're more interested in having more attentive investigations related to crimes that happen in their city. So it's, well, it's, you get a good bang for your buck out of having an investigator assigned to Columbus for sure.
So you still have the major crimes unit?
Yeah, that's a, that's a separate unit. The CID Criminal Investigative Division does major crimes, that's countywide. And then we have another investigative unit, Anoka-Hennepin Drug Task Force, that does drug-related crimes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the report that I prepared. I believe everybody was given a copy of that. I give you a second to get that out and look. Now, last quarter when I was here, we were just coming out of those summer months, so we did have a 45% increase in the calls for service. Those numbers are now down, which is pretty typical for the winter months. Now that our year-end totals are here, you can see that they're pretty comparable to 2023. In 2024, we had a total of 2,380 calls for service, which was 37 more calls than what was had in 2023. So just a 2% increase. And then comparing to 2022, a 5% increase. So just a slight increase with that. You'll see that felony, gross misdemeanor, and DWI arrest were all up. And any questions on the first page before we go to the second page on some trends and some calls for service? One of the other things that I wanted to mention is I do always look with a 12-hour contract from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM, I do always look at the calls for service during that contract time. And in the past quarter, there were 270 calls that occurred outside the contract coverage time between that 2:00 AM and 2:00 PM. However, out of that 952 calls of service total, that only counted for 28% of the calls. So we definitely have our shift coverage in the right spot, especially when we look at the priority and emergency responses. And then of course, during that non-contract time, there's coverage from our countywide deputies as well as the neighboring contracts. Okay, looking at some of the trends on the second page, and you'll see that we didn't have any burglaries in this last quarter and only two for the year. And thefts and stuff were also down. I think we talked about this last quarter too, about, you know, the post-COVID numbers and how they, how nice they look and the increase and the prevalence of easy-to-use home security systems and the Ring doorbells and all of that. But we did have a couple thefts I wanted to talk about. The one that I wanted to share with online shopping becoming more of a routine way of making purchases, many think that the big worry is package thefts after they've been delivered. However, in this instance, the theft actually occurred either at the factory or at the Amazon distribution center. The victim who lives at the 6200 block of 141st Avenue ordered an $800 MP3 player from Amazon. That package arrived on November 18th at about 2:30 in the afternoon. And when the recipient opened the package, the music player was missing and somebody placed like a random adapter and a small brass pipe to mimic the weight and the fill of what an MP3 player would be. So that theft either happened at the factory or at the distribution center and Amazon required a police report in order for them to replace that. So something kind of unique that you wouldn't think you would have to worry about. The other theft I wanted to discuss was at Running Aces. On December 7th, there was a wallet that was stolen from one of the patrons. That wallet eventually turned up to security but had $400 missing. Security was able to track down the victim and the alleged suspect. However, the suspect brought the wallet into the bathroom where there is no security. He denied taking the $400 out of the wallet. Any questions on burglaries or thefts?
Well, the burglary shocked me a little. I just, I don't know if times are changing or what, but it used to be when you lived in the out areas like this, burglaries were high. But it seems like they're going down.
Yeah, the trend is definitely great. Yeah, crimes changed too. I don't know if you have any other thoughts on that as the investigator of Columbus, but I know, you know, the prescription drug thefts aren't occurring as much as they used to. I know that was a pretty big motive before breaking into houses for prescription drugs with the opiate epidemic and things, but.
They're just more, more like credit card fraud or internet scams, things like that that people have to be mindful for. Bank doesn't call you and ask you for money or have you go to the bank or have you withdraw and deposit and do anything like that. So that's been happening in neighboring areas as well. And then, you know, you can't avoid hacking, but if you're getting asked any questions, it just doesn't seem right on your computer. Just delete the message and, you know, play it safe, go with your gut feeling on it.
Speaking of scams, there was one, I know it went out in the Friday update from our crime prevention coordinator, but I did want to share this one because as Investigator Merritt said, the frauds and the way these people kind of really prey on people and get them in a state of panic and then all of a sudden they're doing unsensible things such as making wire transfers and it's completely fraudulent. On January 2nd, our victim here is a 41-year-old female from Columbus. She was driving home from work when she received a phone call from a Hispanic male. The male told the victim that her 16-year-old daughter had stumbled upon his drug transaction in South Minneapolis. So they took her hostage and needed the victim to send her money in order to set her free. The victim could hear a female crying in the background saying, "Mom." Our victim also had a 16-year-old daughter who was out with her friends and in the Twin Cities area. So we believe the suspects were looking on Facebook. They were looking and targeting their victims. Our victim in this case was instructed to send a Western Union money transfer of $1,500. Instead, in her state of panic, she sent a MoneyGram from Walmart. And then the suspect got mad at her and said that he needed to send more, she needed to send more money through Western Union. And at that time, she then did send another $1,000 by that means. And after that was done, she did call her daughter. Her daughter was home in Columbus. So unfortunately, those transfers have all been sent. The preliminary information is showing that the money was wired to Loca, Mexico. So very unfortunate circumstances, but that's kind of how those crimes work because they just get you in a state of panic and shock. And before you know it, you're acting irrationally and sending money transfers, so. Okay, back on track with assaults and damage to properties. You see, we did have a slight increase in assaults, especially within this last quarter. We had a couple. One of them was at a fight that occurred on December 15th in Running Aces. The fight was over $800. That was borrowed by one male to another. The suspect tried to collect his owed funds from the victim. When the victim walked away from him, the suspect attacked him from behind, kicking the victim to the ground and proceeded to punch him several times. The victim in this case did not fight back. Some good Samaritans and security pulled the suspect off of the victim. The suspect was issued a citation for fifth-degree assault and ultimately trespassed from Running Aces. Security did advise the deputies that the victim owes several other people at the casino money, so not a huge fan to the other patrons there. And then on November 28th, we had a domestic stabbing in the city of Columbus. Deputies were called to the location for a family domestic between a father and son where one male had stabbed the other male. There were non-life-threatening injuries, but the suspect was placed under arrest for second-degree assault on that. Any questions on assaults or?
I maybe have another question. Are medicals going out on the freeway? Are we getting a lot of medical calls out there? Matt?
From working half the rotation, medical calls, as in, I can't recall a single medical call where it's not a crash with injuries. And it's been a good while since we've had a crash with injuries on I-35.
Okay, what about like drug calls or anything like that, overdoses or anything?
On the freeway specifically or in general?
Well, our interchange over there with all the businesses?
I don't believe so, no. It seems a lot of our overdoses and other substance-related calls are usually people passing through the area and at the 24/7 gas stations or Running Aces where they have symptoms, call 911. And even some of the times when we get there, they're already gone, choosing hopefully to self-transport to Wyoming Hospital or somewhere else. But we just end up not being able to.
Oh, thank you.
I have one question as well, if I can. Going back to thefts, I know that you were talking about how thefts are becoming more intricate and in talking about the Western Union and all of that. As we have, our population is aging and things like that. And even I would believe somebody if they had called and something in that situation, do you offer any kind of PSAs or things relating to something that our community might be able to watch online or even come here and learn about how to watch and monitor for that?
Yes, we do. And feel free to jump in if you have any other information being down in patrol. But our prime prevention coordinator does do stuff like that, so we'd be happy to come out and do anything. Or I think visiting some of the senior facilities and things like that have been done in the past and we'd be happy to continue doing those.
So we just have to plan that with you?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. This is Janet. The weekly report that we get from Laura, right, is really helpful. Is that public information? Is that something we could put on our website? Because I think the residents would really be interested in that and I think we've not known for sure whether or not that could be shared in the way that it's written.
Yes, you could disseminate that through your newsletter, your Facebook page, your city website, however you would like.
Okay, I mean, I think it's really helpful because you hear a lot of like, whoa, I heard there's a lot of problems, ABC, wherever. And I think seeing those, those numbers really kind of tells the story in a more factual way. So if we could do that, Jack, we could get that on our website. I think that'd be helpful. And then the second question is I remember last year, Sheriff Weiss, you said one of the priorities was going to be enforcing speeding. And I see the traffic stops are down. Is that because people are being more compliant or? And the reason I ask that is because in my own neighborhood, it seems like they are slow, we've changed some of the speed limits and I've noticed people are driving more slowly. But I'm curious what, what your observations are and your experiences are.
Yeah, and looking at your data, is that the, while the number of citations or traffic arrests, as we call them, are down, the number of traffic stops are substantially the same?
Okay.
Keep in mind that especially in a suburb, a city like Columbus, is that a lot of the actions don't necessarily require a citation to change driving behavior. So we'd like to think that that would make a difference post-COVID. I think the freeways, just roads in general, we're starting to get more voluntary compliance, of course, which is a big part of the goal. But yeah, that, the emphasis on driving conduct, especially as it relates to semaphores, which is the most dangerous one for sure, people disregarding a red light or, I just would say leave it at a red light would be, definitely would be a point of emphasis. But yeah, the cops that are here, they're making traffic stops. It's always a function of how available they are versus calls for service. And some calls for service require more paperwork and so on. But I know the deputies make good use of their free time by making traffic stops and trying to make a difference. But it's, you know, it's all a complicated deal because people also want to see squad cars in neighborhoods. But simultaneously, most of the speeding is probably out on the main roads. So it's kind of a complicated mix. But that's why it's important for you to have a good relationship with your deputies and know them on a personal level too, where you can reach out to them and tell them what's important to this community, especially if there's a, like a hotspot that really seems to be a problem.
Okay.
And I think last time it was County Road 19 that was a hotspot. And I always, whenever you bring that to my attention, I relay it to the deputies so they can saturate some enforcement there. But we ultimately, we do leave it to the discretion of the deputy whether to issue a citation or not. And the other thing I wanted to point out too is that the DWI arrests are up. So sometimes the quality of the stop and the type of arrest may take more time too. With doing a blood or alcohol testing, the transportation to jail, all of that kind of stuff takes a little bit more time and a little bit of a better quality of a stop as well, especially with the increase in the felony and gross misdemeanor arrests as well contribute to those traffic stops.
And I know last night I was out for a walk. It was just getting dark and I saw one of your squads walk, drive through our neighborhood and they were, they were patrolling the neighborhood, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Wonderful. And then I did want to add too, Janet, on the Friday update that Laura Landis sends out, she does usually keep up on the scams too and talking about-
Yeah, I thought that would be really helpful to Jenny's point, yeah, to share that.
Great, great. Okay. The other thing I wanted to share, one last call of service that I wanted to highlight was some bomb threats that were had at the city or at Running Aces in November. Essentially what had happened is Running Aces had received a series of bomb threats emailed to them over the course of a few days. Due to the nature of those threats, we did have canine explosive detection dogs deployed out there on two separate nights. However, no explosives were found. The emails that came in were from a platform called Proton, which is based out of Switzerland. And they're very difficult to work with and trace any kind of information with means of IP addresses and those sorts of things. So ultimately, the threat was deemed to be a hoax and the emails eventually did stop, but we did take that very serious and we worked with resources from Minneapolis Airport, the ATF, all kinds of other agencies to assist in securing the area. So that's all I had prepared for calls for service?
Yeah, thank you, Ron. Of our two deputies, I was just curious, have either one of you been CSOs in Anoka County previous to?
Yep. So I was a CSO here for three years. I actually worked out here in Columbus quite a bit as a CSO, so yep.
Okay, thank you.
And I was a CSO for probably half a year because I was a reserve before that. So it was after the Columbus contract for CSO no longer existed. However, I always enjoyed coming out to the east side as a countywide CSO, going through Linwood, Columbus. And obviously, we still would respond to calls for service throughout our patrol area. So I've always been happy to see the experience of the more ordinance related to other crimes and just see how the cities work from each other.
Yeah, and I think it's nice that you got to learn the city at a, you know, whether a younger age or a lesser wage, right? So you were prepared when, when you did come to it as full deputy, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have one comment I'd like to make. Not only would I like to thank the sheriff's office for their excellent law enforcement services, but also the line of communications we have with your office are excellent. And I also want to particularly thank you for working with us in the relocation of your space in City Hall, ultimately to the Public Works Building. Your cooperation has been valuable and it was fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Any other questions for patrol operations or the sheriff's office in general? Okay, well, thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your services. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number C2, it's public forum. And Jack, you want to?
Yeah, I would like to read a statement regarding public forum. The public forum provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items of concern. The public forum may not be used to make personal attacks, air personality grievances, make political endorsements, or for political campaign purposes. The council will listen to the issues but will not generally engage in dialogue with the presenter. Questions from the council will usually be for clarification only. The public forum will not be used as a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but rather for hearing the citizens for informational purposes. If a majority of the council would like to address the issue in more detail, it can be added to the agenda or can be addressed during the regular agenda of a future meeting or referred to staff for further review and response. Thank you.
We're going to open up the public forum. We're going to start with in the audience here. Is there anybody that'd like to get up and make a comment? You have to say your name and your address and speak clearly into the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Ruth Miles. I live on 7828 Camp Number Three Road, Forest Lake. I've been a resident here for 52- been a resident here for 52 years. My husband's lived here all his life. I guess I'm kind of surprised. I was coming here to see the sworn-in process of the new council people and the mayor. And to me, it's obviously, it's already been done. When did that transpire without it being notified to the public that you were swearing in earlier? I mean, I'm kind of disappointed because that's why I came here. Another thing is, is knowing now that your mayor, who's taken over your spot, is a council thing. And as a citizen here, I would like to have a say who comes in and takes that position with it. I don't know the format of all this stuff with it, but I'm very disappointed. I don't know if there's rules and bylaws, but most places that I've gone, the first meeting of the month, they, that's when they have their sworn-in time. So sorry, I'm disappointed.
Well, thank you.
Our visa?
We're not really into carrying on a conversation, but it will be discussed tonight later.
It better be.
And it might be put off to the next meeting, but it's coming.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I will address the question. It's been long-standing practice in this community and several communities to have the swearing-in done before the first meeting. In fact, there's former council members in the audience who probably went through that same process. It's an efficiency so that when people arrive the night of the first meeting, they can begin their work. As a council member, it's also efficient if, if an emergency comes up before the first council meeting, they're already sworn in and they can act on behalf of the city. So that's, that's nothing new. I've been city attorney a very long time, and I don't ever actually remember attending a public swearing-in. So just a little bit of history.
Is there anybody else that would like to get up and use a microphone? Seeing nobody come forth, is there anybody on the internet that would like to step forward and state their name and address? The font's so small, I can't tell who's who there. Seeing nobody coming forth, we're going to close the open forum and go on to item number three, which is the acceptance of letter of resignation. Anybody want to read that motion?
Thank you, Ron. I'll read the report real quickly.
Okay.
Ron Hanegraff submitted his letter of resignation from his city council seat to the city administrator effective January the 8th, 2025. And in turn, that letter was ceded to the city council. Resolution 202501, which is exhibited as attachment one in your packet, is requested for approval by council as a recorded acceptance of this resignation.
Thank you. Now, we need somebody to second that, right?
No, we need a motion. So I'll do it. So I move to approve Resolution 2501, Ron Hanegraff's letter of resignation from his city council person's seat effective January 8th, 2025.
Rob, I'll second.
Hearing that, is any discussion? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Jennifer?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. We'll go on to item number four. You going to read that one, Jack?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Councilmember Ron Hanegraff was elected as the mayor of the city of Columbus on November 5th, 2024. As a result of his election to this post, Mr. Hanegraff, a sitting councilperson whose term expires on December 31st, 2025, has resigned his position by notice to the city administrator effective January 8th, 2025. Mr. Hanegraff is required to resign his council seat prior to being sworn into the office of the mayor of Columbus. In this case, the resignation of Mr. Hanegraff supports the existence of a vacancy of his council seat, and council should pass a resolution declaring Mr. Hanegraff's council seat vacant and fill that position as soon as possible. Council is requested to approve Resolution 2025-02, which declares the vacancy of the seat.
Do you want to read it?
Sure. So I move to approve Resolution 2502, declaration of a city council seat vacancy.
You're second?
This is Jenny. I can second.
Any discussion? Any comments? Hearing none. Rob, we'll start on this side. Do you want to vote?
Oh, Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jenny, aye.
And Ron, aye. We'll go on to item number five, appointment process to fill the vacant seat, council seat of Ron Hanegraff, right?
As stated in the previous report, Ron Hanegraff submitted his letter of resignation as a city councilperson from the Columbus City Council and has been sworn in as the mayor of the city of Columbus. The city council has accepted the resignation of Mr. Hanegraff by the passage of Resolution 25-01 and declared his vacancy of the seat by Resolution 2502. City council must now determine the process for selecting Mr. Hanegraff's replacement. This is, this is a very important statement right here. Minnesota law is silent on the appointment process, and thus, city council may decide the process for making those appointments. State law provides that statutory city councils make the appointment to fill a vacancy, except in the case of a tie vote when the mayor makes the appointment. That means all members of the council, including the mayor, can vote on the appointment. As long as at least a quorum of the council is present, the majority vote of those present is sufficient to make that appointment. The council may appoint any individual who is eligible for election to that office. Generally, to be eligible, a person must be a U.S. citizen, resident of the city, and at least 21 years old. The council may, but is not obligated, to appoint any candidate previously defeated in an election for office. A resigning council member may not vote on the appointment of the successor to that vacancy. A council member who's elected mayor, however, may participate in the appointment vote to fill the vacancy in his or her former council position. Staff recommends council fill the city council vacancy as soon as possible by a process that conclude, that could include the following options: the call for a special election, appointment of a commission member, board member, or previous elected official to that seat, or the appointment of the candidate that finished third in the 2024 general election for the two open council seats, or other options preferred by council. Attached in this packet of information is the LMC summary for the appointment process, which outlines this in detail. So at this time, I would request that council decide on a process for making this appointment to be made on January the 22nd. And the question boils down, is it going to be an elective decision or an appointment decision? I will say one thing about the call for a special election. It would follow the same terms as that of the general election we had in February. The county must be notified by February the 18th of our decision to do this. The earliest we could have the election would be either May the 10th or the 20th. However, that doesn't fit in with some schedules going on here, so the election would have to be held on August the 12th. The potential cost of that special election would be $8,000 to $10,000. And the person that would be running, if that was the process selected, would be only serving about 14 months of a two-year term and would have to run again, and maybe those persons ran previously. The other two would be more timely and I think a better process to follow. But I'll leave that up to the council to make that decision.
For the crowd, Jack, what would those other two options be? Or maybe those that haven't been listening to the meetings in the past?
Yeah. In order really to appoint somebody in this, with this, probably could be a short term on this, with the experience necessary, somebody coming in new, sometimes it takes a year to kind of get up to speed on what's going on, would be to look at somebody from, serving on an existing commission or board or a committee, or maybe a previously elected public official. Use that for your appointment selection. If there's one or two or three, select those and interview them. The other would be to take, as I stated before, to take the runner-up or the next highest vote getter in the 2024 election. Some places actually go and actually open it up by taking resumes and letters of intent to apply. But I don't think that's really fair because everybody here ran for office. They worked hard. And it's, this is just a shortcut to get on city council. So I would recommend either one of those two options that I just gave you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just to be clear for everybody listening and here tonight, the only requirement is that you fill the vacancy. You can do it by appointment or special election. It's really that simple.
So with that, with the appointment, and I know I had brought up the fact of maybe like an application process when we interview, but Jack's alluding to maybe we don't want to do that. But I was reading the statute for vacancies on the Secretary of State website. And as I read on through it, in subdivision 2A under vacancy, I believe it's under 2B, it says if there's two years remaining in the vacancy, that there needs to be a special election. So how does that play into this? Is there something, because we're under a certain amount of residence, that we don't have to follow the Secretary of State guidelines? Or?
There isn't two years. It's less than two years as of tonight. So that's...
That's ridiculous.
It's not ridiculous. It's the, it's the statute. So...
Yeah, all right.
I mean, if, if this occurred in a, there's sometimes a situation where, well, all of you, other than the mayor, have a four-year term. So if you were in your first year, first year and a half, a special election would...
So because we're eight days into it, but Ron actually took the mayor's seat on the first day of January.
The vacancy is, is as of the resignation. So the vacancy occurred this evening with the resignation and the council's acceptance.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Any questions, Jennifer?
I mean, ultimately, we have a lot of people here tonight. I think that this is probably why you all are here. Not to say that you all couldn't be here to listen to the sheriff, who are wonderful, but we have a lot of passion in our small city. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that tonight. We appreciate that all of you are here. So we obviously have a lot of maybe differing opinions on what this should look like. But I think for the health of our city, it's important that all of us agree on what that looks like. Does that seem fair?
Well, I think what the statute says is that the majority decides. So it doesn't have to be unanimous. It'd be great if it was, but it doesn't have to be unanimous. And since there's only four of us on there, if it's a tie, then the statute says that the mayor breaks the tie. So I don't know if that's what you meant, but that's what we have to follow by law.
Well, I think, so in the event of a tie, it would be because we don't agree, right? So in the event of a tie, it would either be Ron deciding what that looks like, or we put it back on the people to decide. And I think, in my opinion, in the best thing we could do in the event of a tie, two and two, it would be important that the citizens decide what that looks like.
So Bill, maybe you can speak to the legalities of that?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Council, I think Councilmember Haglund actually stated correctly what the statute requires. The statute requires that the seat be filled. The statute requires that, that either is done by appointment or by special election, because we are less than two years left on Mr. Hanegraff's term. And so if, if the council, it's always preferable that the council acts, you know, in concert with one another. But there's been plenty of times where that hasn't been the case. And so if the council deadlocks on this, 2-2, then Mr. Hanegraff can appoint the successor. And, and that's exactly how it reads. We've, we've looked at this. We advised the city administrator on this. Megan Rogers actually is a specialist in election law. And so she did all of the work leading up to tonight to advise the city administrator. So I'm, I'm very comfortable that it's been stated. Now, every council member can have a different opinion about how that process should go. And ultimately, you'll, you'll get a chance to vote on, on your preferred option. But that's, that's essentially it. It's, it's not terribly complicated. I'm sure there are people that would prefer an election, and there are people that would prefer an appointment. And we'll, we'll see how the council acts.
So, but to Jennifer's point, I think one of the questions we should ask ourselves up here is whether or not there are a lot of people here in the audience. I think the, the assumption is that if they wanted to weigh in, they would have done it during public forum. But having been in the audience, I know that I wouldn't have necessarily known that. So we can also take comment if we all agree during items of the, on the agenda. So again, you can advise on that, Bill, if you want to. But I don't want to feel, I don't want people to feel like we're shutting them out or we don't want to hear what they have to say. But typically, that would have been during public open forum. So maybe you can speak to how you take comments outside of that.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Council, that actually was the city's longstanding practice that if you came and you wanted to speak on, at the public forum, you spoke on items that were not on the agenda. Those rules were changed, as you might recall, in the last 12 months to, to actually create more flexibility for people to show up and comment on items that are on the agenda. And so it's really at the mayor's discretion. The mayor leads the, the meeting and sets kind of the decorum for the meeting. But the council can all weigh in on whether you want to open up the mic for public comment on this particular topic. I don't really see any downside to that, and I don't think it's, it's certainly not in conflict with the council's current rules for taking public comment.
Rob, you got an opinion?
I'm, I'm fine with it if we want to open it up to the public.
I think we should.
I agree.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. We'll open up the public forum. Does anybody, excuse me, that'd like to discuss this issue or whatever and make a comment? Please step forward, say your name and your address, and we'll go on.
Yeah. My name is Tim Melkier. I'm at 8306 177th Lane Northeast. And just for full disclosure, I'm also on the board for the Sunrise River Water Management. In hearing everybody's, the, the information about how much it would cost to run a special election, the timing that it would take for a special election, et cetera, I, I think that's really ridiculous and unconscionable amount of money to have to put forward from the city. Particularly, we're not a big city, right? So that's number one. I just think financially, fiscally, I think it's irresponsible. Second, we had an election less than three months ago. In that election, there were three individuals, and the separation of vote count between the three individuals was not a lot. And so I think the public has already spoken because everybody in the public knew that Mr. Hanegraff was up for the mayor's position. Everybody knew or should have known or should have been aware about enough about civics to understand that there was going to be a vacancy if he's elected. So it only makes sense to then appoint the individual that came in third for expediency purposes, for continuity of services, or financial fiscal responsibility. Those are all the reasons that I think. And I would venture to guess that 2,300 other people who voted for the third candidate would also agree that that's the form that you guys should take. So that's all.
Thank you. There's somebody else that'd like to step up?
Can I quick ask a question to the resident, to Tim?
I don't think we're supposed to have...
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
I don't think anyone got 2,300 votes.
Oh, that's what a normal protocol is.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, generally, public comment is to, is this direction. So...
Fair enough.
Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, Dan, Mike, 16423 Potomac Street. So as I sit back here and listen to this debate that's going on about how to fill a seat, I would like to make a recommendation to Ms. Lynn Carver Quinn, who I believe sits on the public or the planning commission as we speak. I've had a chance to talk to Ms. Quinn a couple different times, so I think she'd be a good viable candidate to fill that seat and hopefully keep the city running in the right direction with the good leadership that we have. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to set up, come up forward? Jerry?
I'm in the stands. If I sit down, it's going to take me a while to get up.
That is that back surgery a couple of months ago.
Jerry Winicki, 14647 Lake Drive. I just, my opinion, it'd be foolish to spend $10,000 for a special election. And so I think it should be appointed, and if we do go during a special election, I won't be represented, correct? There'll be a vacant seat until that time.
If you have a special election, due to the length of time it takes to get it done, you'd want to make a temporary appointment, because we'd have a fourth people on the council, and there's too many chances for tie votes. Tie votes mean no votes. So you'd still have to make a temporary appointment anyway to keep things running properly. One other thing I'd like to say about a special election is, we have a very small staff. If we have a special election, it's going to take a lot of staff time diverted from their duties. We went through a difficult election process last year. We had three elections we had to do. Doing another one in a short period of time is going to affect the way we actively do service delivery, too. That's a cost that's, you know, it's hard to calculate, but it would involve city staff having to man that, essentially what it is. You have to follow the same procedures, so you have to have the early balloting, 46 days before the election. Then you have to have two weeks of direct balloting, in which you have to have two staff members manning everything over here, election judges, and it becomes quite a task to pull that off.
Okay. So in my opinion, let's have a permanent replacement as quick as we can and get this over with. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to get up?
Hi, my name is Christina Ruddy, 13958 John Relle Street. I just wanted to say that it would be really nice to see some fresh faces on the board. I think it's been long past due. As a younger citizen here, I've been here for 20 years, and I think it would be really great to have a new point of view coming in. Thanks.
Lynn Carver Quinn, 7540-152nd Lane Northeast. So I did consider running, but chose not to, but I have been asked and talked to quite a few residents that had asked me if I would consider, and I did call Ron on Sunday, I believe, and said I would like to be considered. Here's the big picture. For those that think there was one candidate that didn't get in and that should be the pick, there were actually two candidates on the ballot that did not get in office. So when you're discussing this, I want you to look at the whole scope of things. You have two candidates that didn't get on the ballot, not just one. And I think you owe it to the residents to respect their votes. People voted. One got in for mayor, two got in for council, so you should really think clearly when you're doing this. I've been involved in a lot of other cities. I've seen them reach out to planning commission or EDA members. I think I've shown, the couple of years I've been chair of the planning commission, I've co-chaired Fall Fest for two years. I'm very invested in my community when I live here, and Fall Fest brought the businesses and the community together. And so I want to, I would be honored to do it if I'm one of your picks. I hope you will consider me, and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to get up?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Jody Krebs, and I live at 7509-172nd Avenue in Columbus, Minnesota. I guess this might be a question to Mr. Griffith. If our seat that was held by Ron was open till tonight, but he actually took the seat of mayor on the first, how can he hold two elected official seats?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to restate what I said earlier. The resignation occurred on the day he sent the letter.
That's not what you stated on the record, though. You said he, his resignation was stated tonight on the record in the public forum.
Correct. I just, I just said that I want to correct what I said, Jody. So when, when Mr. Hanigraff sends a letter that he's resigning his seat, that's the resignation. It was accepted tonight, creating this process for a vacancy. So in any case, there's less than two years left on his term.
Correct. I understand.
The appointment, the appointment that's being made is to fill a seat that is vacant for less than two years on the term. It's up to the council whether they want to treat that as a vacancy that they can appoint and fill, or order a special election.
Correct. I understood that. I just wanted clarification on the timeframe of the two seats being held.
Right.
So, Bill, can I just ask a question, just again for clarification? I thought, I was just trying to find out, I thought Ron's letter of resignation stated it was effective the 8th. So that's his resignation as a council member. He got sworn in tonight as the mayor, so he didn't have an overlap. There was no mayor, there was no mayor in, there was no mayor from January 1 till tonight. If there had been a business that would have required the mayor, I would have had to step in as the deputy mayor, but I didn't, so.
Right.
Yeah, so there was no overlap.
And, Mr. Mayor and Council, what I was clarifying is, the resignation occurred effective when Ron stated it, because he was giving up the seat on that date. The action of accepting that resignation created this process for filling the vacancy.
Right.
So that's, that's the clarification I was trying to make when you, when you got up and asked the question, Jody.
Okay. Because there's no date on, on the agenda saying what date that letter came in of resignation, so thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the public packet.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And it's on the website. Thank you.
You want to come up, Jeff?
All right. That's your, I want to go through and up.
Okay.
Jeff Duran, 18319 Bender Street, Columbus. I'm not sure how you're going to pick candidates for this position, but I would like to be considered. I've got 15 years' past experience on the council. I've always been an independent voter, never picked a side, so it's just, just want to throw my name in there.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Ruth Miles, 78, 28, Camp Number 3 Road, living in Columbus, down at the Triangle where all the action is. I'm very disappointed again now with what's going on here, that with the eight, I was just up here wanting to know, if he was sworn in tonight, why didn't we see that? To me, it should be documented, was it documented?
Yes. Yeah.
And is it, how is it documented?
Well, I don't want to get into a conversation with you, okay?
Okay.
And that's just the protocol that we do. We're allowing you to speak, okay?
Okay. Listening to everyone here, and I have one of, I'm one of those person who has talked to Lynn Carver Quinn, and I do know Dave Pavoni, who also ran with it. And with those two names in mind, I would hope you would consider somebody who knows what's going on here at the town hall, and I give my support that you would decide who you think is best to serve there with it, to meet our needs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ruth. Anybody else that'd like to get up?
Good evening, Council. My name is Dave Pavoni, 16731 Potomac Street. Congratulations, Ron. Fought a good battle.
I can't hear you, Dave.
Congratulations, Ron. Fought a good battle. I'd like to just throw my name in there as a potential candidate here. I have eight years of experience as mayor, as well as eight years of running for mayor. So if you want to consider me, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to throw their name in? Make a comment, statement?
Moving a little slow on this new hip.
Name is Tom Olson, 13332 Lyons Street, Columbus. Hopefully, I won't go over too much of what's already been covered, but I do have a few comments. First of all, how do you pronounce your last name?
L-A-T-I-N.
Latin. Yeah, it's been pronounced three, three different ways so far, so I'll try to remember that. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Glad to see you here. Hopefully, you do well. Welcome, Rob, back again for another four years, and our new mayor, Ron.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. First of all, I do not support a special election. Every council member here, at one time or another, has vowed to watch out for our tax dollars, how they're being spent. I see it on your campaign literature, and I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. So that option, I would throw out the window. I did a little brain teasing just to see what that would cost, and I heard a $10,000 figure for the city came out of this discussion. So I thought, well, what's it going to cost the rest of us and other individual expenses? So I did some number fudging. If you want to use your pencils, go ahead. We have 3,078 Columbus registered voters, as per that state of Minnesota, I think Rob referenced it on the Columbus webpage link, whoever did that, I like it. We had 28, 43 voted this year, have 89% turnout. So I did some fudging, you know, how many people would show up? And you could work these numbers any way you want. So I took 50% of the 3,078 possible voters, rounded it down to 1,500 that might be able to make it to a vote here. Then I said, well, how many vehicle trips is that going to take? So out of the 1,500, some are going to go together, husband, wife, some are going to come over solo. So I said, well, we got 1,000 vehicle trips to come into effect. And I figured out, well, let's see, I drive eight miles here, nine and a half, actually, so round trip for me is 16. I rounded that down to average for everybody that's going to come, far and close, to 15. Then you take the federal mileage rate that you get for driving a vehicle for federal tax deduction, 70 cents a mile. 1,000 trips, by 15 miles, the round trip I have to make, by 70 cents, comes a 10,500 approximately out of pocket for everybody else that's not being taken into account that lives in this city. That's not being paid by, you know, it's coming out of my pocket, your pocket, whoever shows up for the vote. So that's not counting the personal time lost, and I'm being conservative in my estimate. So if I threw together the 10,000 the city's paying, the 10,000, so I would probably say it's going to be more than that, that would, total cost would come, it's probably to cost 30,000, 40,000 to run this election. That's ridiculous. So that option, as far as I'm concerned, that doesn't include whoever's going to run may have to spend in personal finances. You know what it takes to run a campaign and do it on short notice. That is out of the books. Secondly, I would recommend that the city consider Scott Wendell to fill the seat vacated by our new mayor. I believe Mr. Wendell has the integrity, the community support qualifications, and recognition to represent Columbus. What kind of person are we looking for here? We want a person with roots in Columbus. Scott and his wife, a lifelong resident, have raised five children in Columbus for the past 20 years. They have family ties to Columbus going back four generations, and they've had multiple generations in the elementary school over here. Scott has a long history of a community, committing to community services. He's served as a police officer, we had them here tonight, for 21 years in a variety of roles. He was a SWAT team member, patrol officer, lead background investigator, mounted patrol trainer, mobile force, field force, team leader, and technological unit officer. He's a two-time recipient of life-saving medal, three-time for the exceptional service medal. He's won a K9 achievement medal, and he's a DARE officer. And if anybody doesn't know what DARE does, they work within partnership with the police officers, parents, in schools, to help prevent the use of drugs, game, membership, and violence. So you can't, that's all I can say on that. In addition, he's involved in youth programs and boards. He's a volunteer for the Forest Lake Youth Football Coach. He's served as community education volunteer basketball coach. He's a former board member of the Forest Lake Youth Football League and lead director of the National Flag Football League on a government service. He's a member of the Ramsey County Business Administration Board for hazardous waste generators. Scott's a former business owner with his wife, who operated out of Columbus home, and he believes in responsible home-occupied businesses, which was a thing for the last couple of years around here. In the past, Scott has served on the Columbus Public Works Advisory Board, the Road Paving Subcommittee. And most importantly, Scott currently serves in the Columbus Planning Commission and is currently, is current on the issues facing Columbus. He does need to get his training wheels...
Hey, Ron.
...and time to get up to speed.
He's breaking the rules that were set forth. Sorry, Tom, but I think they laid some rules out before this.
I'm sorry, what?
This is a public open forum, right?
I know it is, but we haven't set a time limit on anybody here yet tonight, have we?
Sorry to interfere, then.
I think we have to call it kind of quick.
I've got about one minute, Mitch. One minute.
I haven't brought my bio, but you were going to read all this.
Well, you don't have the floor, okay, Jeff? I think getting up and walking up and intimidating isn't the right route. We got to relax here and calm down. We're trying to solve a problem, not create another one.
Well, you know his bio, because he's random.
I'm sorry, what?
You know his bio, because he's random, so he's just speaking to the clerk, but he doesn't have a...
You don't have the floor, okay, Jeff? I don't want to carry a conversation between us, the council, and that's just a normal protocol. And Tom, I think you do have to cut it quick here.
I'll be done in 30 seconds.
Three seconds.
And sorry, Tom, if I could...
The vote total between the second and third, and that's already come up, is 43 votes, and Scott had received 1,265. Now, in the last, four years ago in the election, you had 1,231 votes. That's at least a good representation of what Columbus is looking for. I would recommend Scott for the position.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to set a limit on...
I think we probably have to now, because people are getting...
You can't now, that you've allowed one person to go, we can't.
Mr. Mayor, you're, you're running the meeting. He can establish the time limits on public open forum. He's the, he's the chair of the meeting, Jennifer. That's how, how that works under Minnesota law.
It just doesn't seem fair to allow one person to go on, but nobody else to go in.
Fine. It's up to the mayor whether he wants to establish a time limit.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, let's, Rob, yeah?
Yeah, no, I was just, and I was, Tom, I wasn't trying, I interjected on you while you were speaking. I apologize. I felt like it was going down a more political manner, and before we opened public open forum, that's we set those rules for us.
I think it did get out of control. And when I say out of control, we got people up here, whether Tom rattled off for 20 minutes, or Lynn got up and made her debut. I don't think we need a soapbox up here to advertise what we're doing. I mean, if they're real running. If you want to get involved in this, make your statement and get it over with. I don't believe in putting a time limit on it, but as we've seen it, they get overhand on that one. And I don't know what people are going to say ahead of time. So I don't know, Council, do you think it's best to put...
That's fine. I think the council, other council members have expressed concern about establishing a time limit mid testimony. I do think the statement that was made at the beginning from... I do think the statement that was made at the beginning from Mr. Davis, that this is not an opportunity for political campaigning. If you want to talk about process, people have certainly indicated that they're open to being appointed. I don't think that crosses the line. But then we start reading people's resumes. Now we're campaigning for those folks. We're turning an open forum into a political campaign. So that was stated at the beginning of the meeting. Everybody, I think, understood that. Thank you.
Okay. So we're still not going to have a time limit, kind of?
That's your call, yep.
Yep. If it gets out of control again, we'll cease it. So, sir, you're up here. You want to state your name and your address and?
Chase Roth, 8820 189th Avenue, Columbus. I've been watching so far on Zoom, and fortunately, I was up here in time to speak. I find it kind of despicable that we knew this day was coming for the last two months, and this is the first time you're opening up to hear voices and opinions from the community. That's despicable. You knew you won November 5th, 6th. We knew this day was coming. So to address it now is BS. That being said, given the short length of this term, I think we should really consider somebody with experience, as some of the names have already been thrown out, not a freshman here, to fill less than a two-year seat. So.
Okay, thank you.
I do not normally say anything. My name is Marilyn Latin, 16010 Kettle River Boulevard, Forest Lake, or Columbus, sorry. My concern here is that we do a background check. If you are going to, you're going to appoint somebody, then we need to do a background check. A lot of nice things have been said about a lot of these people, but that is not necessarily correct. So I really feel like we need to do a background check before you appoint anybody.
I don't, well, we're not going to make a comment on that. I don't want to carry out a conversation, but.
Why don't you take the public comments, and then you'll have council discussion, and you can ask any questions you want of myself, the administrator.
Okay. Is anybody else like to make a comment, statement?
Let me state my name again?
No, we know it.
Okay.
Actually, there's minute takers, so it would be good if they.
Yeah, you better, better say your name.
What?
There's an audio recording, and it helps the minute takers know who's.
Okay, my name is Ruth Miles. I live at 7828 Camp 3 Road, Columbus. I'm where all the action is on Triangle. With it, I appreciate what you're doing here tonight, opening this up to us with it. And I think with hearing the comments that I had, I'd like to see this wait till your next town hall meeting and then go. That gives you time to think about what you really want to vote for here because it's, we are the citizens, and we support you, and time tells. So I appreciate that you're here, that I'm here, and all the people are here. So thank you for giving us time.
Thank you, Ruth. Is there anybody else? Hearing none, we'll close the open forum again. I don't think, is there anybody online that like to make a comment? Hearing nothing there, we'll close it, and we'll have a discussion about this. Would you like to make a comment, anything, Jennifer? Or I can start with Rob, or I can start with Janet. Anybody?
I started last time.
I mean, there's a lot, lot to digest here, I think. I just want to start by thanking you all because I think we had a lot of differing opinions going on, and everybody is very respectful, I think, and tried their best to be respectful. And we obviously had a lot of people who had interest in the position. What, and I just wanted to take a minute and thank you all for being here because I think, and I believe in community involvement. I, I think it's hard because we have a lot of people interested. I think that, you know, obviously, it sounded like Scott, Jeff, Dave, and Lynn at least all had interest. So I want to make sure that that's acknowledged and not just breezed over because I think all of you have, you know, a lot of, I mean, between all of us here, we have hundreds of years within this community. And I think that all of you have a lot of passion, and we have passion for our city. So I think I want to acknowledge and potentially find a way to acknowledge the four people that are interested.
Okay. Want to go, Janet?
So I, I appreciate all of the input as well. As I think back to how we started this, Jack threw out a number of suggestions. And I also want to remind all of us that the point of this discussion is not to name a person, but to decide on a process. So I think, I, I always start with the easy stuff. It sounds like there is not support for a special election, and maybe we can take that off the table right off the bat, if that's how we all feel. And it sounds like that's pretty much was the consensus of the people in the audience as well. So that, I would make that as a suggestion, but I'll let Rob weigh in, and you weigh in first. I'm happy to make that motion if everyone's in agreement.
Rob, your thoughts?
Yeah, so my, my thing on the special election was I was just trying to reference that statute, but it seems I was interpreting it fairly well. I'm sorry about being passionate about it. It seems like eight days, you know?
Could I say one more thing about that statute, Rob?
Yeah.
There's a couple of other things, and Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, but state statute also says there can be no official business conducted by the city on a holiday that's observed by the state. And actually, that would only become effective like at 12:01 a.m., so technically, that would still be less than two years on the term.
Sure.
Because Ron's council seat didn't expire until December 31st.
Correct.
End of the day. So it's kind of a little small nuance. The, the other reason we want, that's good to do that is because if he had resigned as a council member earlier, then we're left with the possibility of having to do something, not having a quorum, so.
Okay. Yep, so, so that was, I was just trying to put that forth for us to chew on, right? Just to make sure we were doing the right thing. Do you want to keep going before I?
No, no, I, I think.
I was wondering what your opinion was on Janet's deal about election.
It, it seems from who we have here, and if you showed up tonight, you wanted to have your voice heard, that it seemed like most didn't want a special election. But that's kind of the vibe I was getting, so I think we need to go with the will of the people. I did have a few people call me and say they wanted to see a special election. They didn't care what it costs to have their voice heard. They wanted their voice heard. So I'm a little torn on it. But if, if we can come to an agreement on some sort of application process or interview process, maybe go on that route. I'm definitely not in favor of just moving to the next highest vote recipient because I don't, I just not.
Jennifer, do you have your thoughts on a special election?
It sounds like people would rather we discuss that and make a decision. From the sounds of it, people did not want that. And so based on the opinions of the people who spoke, I think that it's appropriate that we work to try to make a decision.
Okay, I, I go along with your thoughts. I think a special election should be, we should wipe it off slate and figure out how, what other options we have left.
So does that require a motion, Bill?
I think it would be helpful to take a vote.
So then I, oh, do you want to?
Can we maybe discuss the other options prior to setting that forth?
Sure. You can, you, you can bring a motion now, or you can package it all together. Either way works.
It doesn't matter to me, however you want to do it, mayor.
Well, I, I think the election, why don't we just get that off the table right now? Then we can discuss what's left. I, I, I just don't see an election being the route right now. That's, I, we get that off the table, we'll figure out where we're going.
So then I would make the motion to remove having a special election as an option for moving forward with, to fill this vacancy.
Anybody want to second that?
I think we need to discuss the options before we make a motion.
But there's a motion.
Process is to make a motion, get a second, and then have discussion.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it just fails for lack of a second.
Mm-hmm.
No.
No.
Now, I'll second the motion, but it doesn't seem like it's going to go anywhere, so. So we're back down to square one then?
Well, no. So now we have a motion and a second, so now we can have discussion.
Correct.
It's okay, I read, I read my Robert's Rules for Dummies before I came.
All right. So what's the reason, and can you help me out, why you don't want to vote that out of the question here, or?
Well, I'm feeling like, let's, let's, let's talk about the other options, right? Is, you know, is the will for it to come to a tie, and then you just appoint who you want? Or what? I mean, where are we at with this? I mean, we kind of got to go through all the processes so they understand what, what the options are here, right?
Mr. Mayor, if that's the case, then you should just take the vote. If, you should just take the vote on the motion unless there's other discussion, then, then that can be off the table. You can then package everything together once you agree on a process, and maybe you won't agree on a process. You know, that's, that's a possibility. Part of the reason for filling the seat is so you don't have two, two votes, right? So, but at some point, you're going to have to set a process where the default position is if you can't get a vote from the four members, then the mayor will be in a position to appoint. So it's, it's best if you can get some concurrence here tonight.
Okay. Well, then we have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second.
And I, and I will just say, I mean, I'm making the motion because I didn't hear anybody out there say they want a special election. I agree with the testimony that's been given already that it's not a good use of public dollars to have an election when we just had one 60 days ago. And I think starting all over again with this process isn't, isn't, in my opinion, the best interest of the city. So that's why I'm saying, and it's a hard decision, and I'm sure there's going to be a variety of options that people will want to consider. But you got to start whittling down the options, or we won't, we won't, we won't be able to come to a conclusion. So if this is the least favorite of everybody, that's why I say take it off the table.
And that's why I second it, just to narrow it down.
Sure.
Where we're going. So any other discussion? Not hearing any, we'll take a vote. Jennifer?
Nay.
Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
And Ron, aye. So we're tied.
The motion fails.
Okay. Well, somebody else can make a motion then.
I guess, can we talk about the other options then, at this point?
Yeah, yeah, I think everything's open.
Yeah, I mean, is, is the majority, the body, in favor of some sort of? So I've done some research on this, like you had, you were saying you, you'd done some there. I noticed Grand Rapids, Minnesota, they just had a vacancy. They opened that up for an application interview process. All, all of the council, all the four remaining, got the interview and come to a census on who they thought the best candidate was. I felt like that, we did that with, with our city administrator, and I felt like that, that went fairly well. And whether it's not as strenuous, I mean, we went through quite a numbering process and things of each candidate. We kind of know the groundwork of it. Is that, is that anything that others would be interested in?
I, so this is Janet. I mean, I think that's one way that you could certainly do it. I, I go back to, what is an election? You know, why do we have elections? The elections are not for the city council members to select who's going to sit up here. The elections are for the people to, and we just had one. There were three people that put their names in a hat and, or put their names on a ballot and said that they were willing to run for two seats on the council. I don't know for sure, but Lynn, I think who you were speaking of was the person who ran for mayor, which that's not the position we're trying to fill right now. Certainly, we could consider Dave's offer that he would be willing to be considered. But my, there was three candidates for this two seats. So when, when I think about what the whole purpose of an election is, if we'd had an election a year and a half ago, I'd probably feel differently about this. If we had an election where two candidates had the majority of the votes and the third candidate had very few votes, I would probably feel very different about this. But we had 39 votes between the person who got elected and a person who didn't. It's pretty darn close. I think that ignoring the votes of those 1,200 and however many, 39 or 69, or I wrote down the number, Tom, sorry, I don't, 1,265 votes, when it was only 60 days ago that they were cast, I don't feel good about that. So I would be in favor of going with the third candidate. And I'll just put it out there, and that's why.
I, I have to concur with Janet on this. I do believe in elections. I believe the public gets to make a choice. But if one of the three candidates that were, ran for council would not have ran, we wouldn't have a choice. Nobody out there would have a choice because they just get elected because they're the only two on it. Same way with the mayor. If I didn't run against Dave on the thing, you wouldn't have a choice. Dave would be the mayor. So I, I agree that we gave people a choice on November 5th, and they voted. And Rob got the highest votes. Jennifer got the second highest. And then we got a third person there. It costs a lot of money to run an election, and any one of you or anybody in the city could have ran. But they didn't. And now, all of a sudden, everybody wants the position. And I have a problem with that. I figure that people put the effort in it, and if it was sitting any other way, if Rob would have been the third one out, I'd probably support him. And my reason is, is because he has the experience. If Jennifer would have gone the other way, I'd probably support her. It takes a lot to run an election. You're door knocking, you're begging for money, and you're looking for votes. And now, all of a sudden, everybody wants the position because they don't have to do the work. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I, I praise the people that stood up and said they're willing to step in. But they weren't willing to step in for $2 to register to vote. I mean, to run as a candidate. That's all you have to do. And you got 10 days to make a decision. And after the 10 days, you got three days, you can back out of it. But nobody did that. So we had three people, and that's why I think we should leave it down to the, to the three people. But if we can't come to an agreement, I don't know what we're going to have to do here.
I mean, so with the candidate you're considering, do we name that person? Do we, I mean, I have some issues with some things I saw in the newspapers about the person you're considering. And I think that's maybe some of the issues people are having here tonight. Are that, is the, really, what do we consider? Anybody can pay the dollar, $2, but there are other things to consider as well. And one of that is the reputation of our city, right? And that's where I'm concerned. That, that is truly my concern. And so when you look at some of these different things going on, how is that not considered as well?
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, as legal counsel for the city, I have to advise any council member, any elected official, to be very, very careful about your statements. If they're factual, if there's matters of public record, fine. But you should confine yourself to those things that are known, that are factual, so we don't end up with a situation where there's public defamation. So that's my role, is to kind of keep people in the bounds. I think that certainly your comment about wanting to vet the council members, that's, that's perfectly legitimate. I, I think that's where Councilmember Bush is coming from. Also legitimate are the other comments you heard from the council. So you're just going to have to, you know, pick a path and see if you got the votes for the path. And then, and then if you have a process where you're taking applications, you know, anything that's a matter of public record is fair game to be considered.
How about we narrow it down to just applicants that are on assemblies or commissioners now, or on commissions? They can apply. I think, no offense to some of the people that put up that haven't been here for six, seven years, haven't attended a meeting. They may know the protocol when you're up here, but they don't know what the history was in the last three, four years, or the last. last six months. But why don't we leave it up to an application on who's ever on a committee, whether it's park board, planning commission, road commission, whatever? And we make a decision off of that. They can put in an application, we review them, or whatever.
I'm trying to, I mean, we spent a huge amount of time defining what the criteria were for the applicants for a city administrator, and we evaluated those applications against that. We don't have that for council members. I mean, you'd have to develop that. You're talking about a big, long process if you're going to do this right. And that's why I don't think asking for applications makes sense. We don't have a process to evaluate them. I mean, it's going to come down to what we're talking about tonight is who we think deserves to be named or appointed. And so when you're looking for employees, you've got a job description, you've got, here are the minimum requirements, here are the essential qualifications, and you evaluate the, you know, the applications based on that. And as you remember, that's how we scored them too. We don't have that for council members. So we would have to create that, I think. You can weigh in, attorney, if you want to, but I mean, I think to do it fairly, you would have to do that in advance of asking people to apply, or at least prior to when you were evaluating those applications.
Mr. Mayor and council, because there's very few legal requirements for someone to run, the administrator discussed those, you really don't have to create a set of standards. You might want to. You might want to, you know, belabor the process and, you know, have a set of standards for reviewing those applications. You could simply say, just as people voiced their indication tonight of a willingness to serve, we simply want to know if you're willing to serve, and if you'd like to say why and why you're qualified, that could be in a letter. It could be two pages, it could be two paragraphs. So you're not legally required to set out standards. That's something you can decide to do. You know, when you're contracting for a city administrator for a number of years, you know, obviously, it was a much more defined process. And you have an employment contract in place and standards within that contract. So the interesting thing about this process is it's those three requirements, I think, citizen, 21 years old, and, yeah, resident, 21 years of age. So it can be that simple. So you, again, throwing it back at the council, you have to decide how much of a process you want. It could be simply, you're going to consider all applications received by the next meeting.
I don't know if I want to go through 1,000 applications. I mean, I'm just being frank, but if somebody wants to write a paragraph or, you know, that they want to serve or something, we've got to move somehow, get this across.
I think, again, I will state it again, I think we honor the votes of the 1,265 people that voted. I mean, 39 less than Jennifer, and Jennifer's sitting up here. There's a lot of people who wanted that person to be on the council. And you got fairly elected, that's great, but now we have an open seat, and this is an elected position. It's not like hiring an employee. This is what the public should be weighing in on and seeing that they want, and 1,265 people did. I know we have a lot of people here that don't agree with that, but 1,265 people did. And to just discount that, I think, is wrong.
So I'm just going to say that I morally cannot support the candidate that you're putting forth, the candidate that you two ran with. I just can't do it, and I won't vote for it. So I'm just going to tell you that now, and however it's figured out, it's figured out. If it ends up by appointment, so be it. We'll live with it for two years.
I still think we should do the application process, and even if it starts with commission only, at least something so that we can review everything together as a group. I think tonight, it's become a little bit more than I think any of us thought it would be. And so I think for us to look at it together might be healthy, if that makes sense. I just am trying to be healthy about this and listen to the people that are here as well.
Well, I have strong feelings too, just like Janet does. We had 12. With all due respect, Rob, I think you're throwing the word morally out there. I don't know if anybody ran a criminal history on me, and I surely didn't run them on all you guys, and I don't ever plan to. I figure that if you got the will to come in and donate time, and that's just what this is, it's donating time, not making a million dollars here. I just have an issue with that. I do believe that there's 1,200 people out there that voted for that young man, and I think we've got to honor that too. So if you guys want to make a motion or something, we'll see how it goes again.
So this is Rob. I'd make a motion that we move forth with some sort of application process, as Ron stated, possibly a paragraph and a bio about why you're suited for the job, that we open it up to previous elected as well as individuals that are sitting on boards, as Ron noted, whether that be the park board or the many boards that are covered, cable commission by the city. Look for a second.
This is Jenny, I'll second.
Well, I can't, I have to put some limits on this. This is a discussion, now we've got a motion on the table, and I think we have to limit it down. I don't mind the idea of putting it on the committees, but I think that anybody who's been out of office for eight, six, seven years or whatever, they're not in tune with what's happening here. And I just think we should keep it to people like on the planning commission, or the park board, or the road and bridge, or whatever. I can't support that motion. Janet?
I mean, I said what I was, I mean, are you willing to amend your motion?
Depends what the amendment would be.
Based on what he just said? You take off the previously elected?
If that's going to keep this moving forward, yes.
You willing to second that amendment?
This is Jenny, I'll second the amendment.
So let's get it clarified now. What are we talking about? The planning commission? I don't know.
So you had stated, anyone that's currently sitting on a board, you know, or a commission or an assembly or a watershed or something of that nature that's associated with the city? Does that sound? Or just a board or a committee?
Just want to clarify that the official commissions and committees of the city do not include the liaison positions to other bodies. So you could, I mean, you could certainly expand it to that, but if the objective is to get those people that serve on commissions and committees of the city, it would be those that have been named. Park, planning commission, EDA, road and bridge, what am I missing? Is that it? Because there's a number of liaison positions.
So that would eliminate the watersheds, then?
Yeah, those positions are liaisons to other bodies.
Oh, sorry, I thought I stated that earlier on.
To my point, that that's a liaison position to another body. All the other commissions and committees are subsets of the city. They are, they serve the council, they serve the city. I mean, that's just a way to define it. You can certainly expand it to anybody who's got any other appointment as well, but that was the sense of what I was taking from the mayor, and if I'm wrong, the mayor can correct me.
Well, I'm trying to limit it. I think you're right on one point, but I'm kind of going where Rob is, is how are we going to get this thing moving? Because I do fully believe in what Janet said, and I'm trying to work this out, and I don't think.
I don't think you're going to get a consensus on what I said.
Okay.
I mean, I think you're just not. So you're either going to have to try to exercise your authority or take it down another path.
Well, what's the other authority I have?
Mr. Mayor, if the council attempts to appoint somebody and they become deadlocked, then you can make the appointment.
Okay.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, tonight we're not appointing anybody. We're just choosing the path to do this.
That's exactly right. So everybody should understand, this is the council's time to try and come to consensus on a path and a process. And if you can't do that, then I imagine at the next meeting, there'll be some votes, and if those votes are deadlocked, then the mayor is free to appoint.
So tonight, again, just to clarify, because I want to make sure I understand this too, because we're just talking about a path, it has to be, it has to be a majority, and the mayor vote is not a tie-breaking vote? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you need to get to three.
Okay.
And so there is a motion on the table. It's the original motion made by Mr. Bush, seconded by Councilmember Latin. So you need to take action on that unless it's going to be amended, then you would take action on the amendment.
And the amendment was boards and commissions, correct? And not previously elected?
That's what I heard.
Was seconded?
Yep.
And are making a concession there, I want to tell you that.
So that is the motion and the second, because both the motion maker and the second are have agreed, so you should take a vote then on that amended motion.
I don't know if I can support that motion, okay? No. I look at it, I have to stand my ground on the 1,200 votes. I withdraw my amendments.
Well, the motion has been made amended, you should just vote no.
Okay, all right.
If we're still under conversation, is the individual here today?
No, I don't see him.
You can certainly.
Has anyone asked him if he wants to be or have the position?
He's listed in the election results, so you can, I know you're trying hard not to name him, but it's a matter of public record.
Mr. Wendell?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't see him.
Have you talked to him and asked him? I'm guessing he would want it, right? But I don't know that he has.
Yes, I don't know. That'd be up to Jack to call him or whatever.
We've not asked him.
Okay.
I did reach out to Mr. Wendell yesterday to keep, I kept you in the loop, Jennifer, and told him that the meeting tonight would not be to make an appointment, but to select the process. And he did indicate at that time he was still willing to serve.
Thank you, Jack. And Mayor?
So we're going to take a vote.
So we have to take a vote.
We're going to take a vote.
Yes.
Jennifer?
Okay, I want to clarify, are we on Rob's motion?
The amended motion that you seconded.
That I seconded?
Yes.
Then I would vote yea.
Rob, aye.
Rob, aye, Sergeant.
Okay. For the purposes of moving this along, it still includes the person that I feel is the right person, so I will vote yea on that.
You're voting what?
I will vote yes, so we can move on and have a process.
Okay, all right. So my vote will be yes too. We'll move this on to the next meeting, unless we set up some standards.
So I think we have to define the process now. So what are we going to ask for people who are currently on the commissions and boards to do?
Right. So we had some people that did make a comment out there. If they're not on a commission or whatever, they're not on the list. It's just anybody on a commissions or assemblies or whatever.
Mr. Mayor and council, can I suggest a few things? Since the time is short between meetings, I suggest that there be a written communication with everybody who serves in that capacity, that they're being invited to apply by probably within a week or 10 days, so it's clearly ahead of the next meeting, that they have a statement of their interest, their qualifications, they can submit a bio, whatever they want to do to support that application, and that the staff led by the administrator will sort through those and provide a summary, and all materials will be made public.
Perfect.
Perfect, okay. So we've got to make a motion on that then?
Yes, that would be good.
Go ahead, Janet. I was just wondering if we can have kind of a timeline to have those in before the meeting, so we all have time to digest them, write and read them.
Exactly. I said something like, you know, seven to 10 days, but you decide.
Because we only got two weeks, so maybe they have from today, they have seven to 10 days to apply, and then we have the rest of that time too.
I'm just suggesting the outline. You guys can make the motion as you see fit.
I'm going to look at the calendar right now. So today is the 8th, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 days would be the 15th, 10 days would be the 17th, which would be, if you said by the morning of the 17th, you'd have it for a packet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But we've got Martin Luther King in there, don't we?
That's a Monday.
That's Monday.
So you won't be there that day?
Well, the 17th, isn't that prior to that? So I'm going to make the motion that we direct staff to send a written correspondence on to all members of our city's boards and commissions, to ask them to submit a letter of interest to serve as on the city council. It would be due by 8 o'clock the morning of January 17th, to be considered by the council at their 22nd, January 22nd meeting. And they would ask, I mean, a letter of intent or a letter of interest with their qualifications is what we'd be asking for. There's the motion.
It's Rob, I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any amendments? Nothing? Rob, want to vote?
I guess if Janet would be willing to amend it, that it could possibly be included in our agenda packets for that Friday.
Perfect.
Because that would give them sufficient time by when we'd have to pick them up in the afternoon.
And actually, when they come in, they will probably go out separately before the packet goes out to give you a little bit more time to take a look at them.
Like via email?
Yep.
But it'll be in the packet that will be prepared on the 17th.
Yes.
Correct. Good.
Okay, take a vote.
Rob, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jenny, aye.
Ron, aye.
Phew.
We worked through our first problem as a council?
No crying, no yelling and crying. I love it.
I'd like to say something. This is a great example of practical people working out a very difficult problem, and you are to be commended. Thank you. It's a very difficult decision, and I've been through processes like this before where it would just go south in a hurry. You all did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. So much paper here, where are we now?
No, and I wanted to take a minute and thank you both for working with us.
Oh, absolutely. That's what we're here for. All right.
We're on item number six, Mr. Mayor.
Number six?
Yes.
All right. Discussion of appointments to commissions, committees, and boards.
Thank you. Assignments of city council persons, and I'm going to read this, over organization and other public advisory boards as liaison or members are recommended by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. As this council will not be fully seated until January the 22nd, staff recommends that only those essential appointments necessary for meetings to be held prior to the next council meeting be made tonight. These appointments are for the position of deputy mayor, park board liaison, planning commission liaison, and the personnel committee. In my discussions with Mayor Handigraft, he recommends that Janet Haglen be appointed as deputy mayor. He made also the recommendation that Mayor Handigraft himself be appointed to the park board with Jennifer Latin as the alternate. For the planning commission, he recommends that Jennifer Latin be appointed to the first quarter term as the city council liaison. And for the personnel committee, that Janet Haglen, myself, and Ellen Hendricks be appointed to the personnel committee. Anything left on that list would be done once the full council is seated, so we'll have a chance to assign those duties more equitably across the board.
Did you mention the fire board and I miss it?
The fire board doesn't meet before the next council meeting, so after we disappoint- The fire board doesn't meet before the next council meeting, so after a disappointment is made at the next council meeting, then we'll assign those other positions.
Okay.
Because then we'll be fully seated.
Sure.
Should we have to vote on that?
Yes, with that, then-
Motion?
So I can do it. I know your voice is starting to give on on you.
Appreciate it.
So I move that the appointments and liaisons for the deputy mayor, park board liaison, personnel committee, and planning commission liaison be approved as reported by Administrator Davis and as recommended by the mayor, and that the remaining assignments as identified in agenda item C6 be made upon the seating of the full council.
This is Jenny. I can second.
We got a motion? Any discussion?
None, Mayor.
Okay. We'll take a vote. Jennifer?
Jennifer, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. Move on to number nine?
Actually, it'll be number seven.
Seven?
And what we have here, we've had an interest expressed by the Columbus seniors to maybe start using the community center again as a source and place for their meetings. There was a policy that was prepared several years ago that wasn't approved. It was kind of left hanging out. I believe this happened about the time of COVID, about that time the seniors did not rent the facility or use it anymore. That's included in your agenda, and it's mainly tonight for discussion only because we didn't have a work meeting. So I'm asking that you all consider the approval or discussion of that policy for the community center rental. And if you just want to do it and make recommendations for changes in that, I have a couple of changes, too, that I'd like to make, and we can consider that for passage at our next meeting.
So this is Janet. I want to ask Bill, do you remember when our seniors kind of ceded their space and their assets, and we had an agreement with them about how we were going to, we need to find a copy of that agreement because this policy needs to be concordant with that. And there are things in here, at least as I remember it, that aren't concordant with that. So I would recommend that we don't, I mean, we can certainly discuss this, but we don't take any action on it until we have that and we make sure that what's in that agreement is also represented in this policy. One of the things for sure is I believe that they had priority to have the center on Tuesday afternoons. And if they're interested in meeting again, I think we need to include that as a priority of use. So if we can find that and work that in, I think it would be good. I think the other question that I'd like to pose for the rest of the council is whether or not we want to open this up to non-residents.
And it is, it is in there, right, Janet?
Correct. It is now.
It's a little bit more of a charge, though.
It's more of a charge, but I think my question is that, you know, it's a community asset supported by tax dollars of these residents. So do you want to open it up to people who don't contribute towards it? I don't have, I mean, I could be convinced either way, but I think it's a question we need to answer.
I guess at a minimum, my opinion is that the residents have to have precedence over any non-residents. But how do you do that if, say, a non-resident booked it first and then a resident?
That's right.
So that's kind of, that's kind of the bind in my mind.
I also think that, you know, many other cities have these kinds of facilities. This is the only one we have in Columbus. So I guess, you know, it's bought and paid for. I guess I would just like to have it reserved for our residents in our groups, you know, our nonprofit groups and our community groups and things like that within the city of Columbus. And then we don't have to, you know, we're not looking to try to fund this asset. So I don't think we have to open it up to everybody. And that way, we don't have to worry about whether a resident or resident group gets, you know, edged out because a non-resident group already reserved it and put down their deposit. That's something to think about, though. I could be convinced otherwise.
Got any thoughts, Jennifer?
Oh, I think it all looks fine.
Anything on whether residents only or not allowing it to non-residents? I mean-
It could be sweet either way. I mean, I think it's hard to put residents first when it really is when you sign up. No two people are coming at the exact same time to sign up. So I think it's maybe a non-issue. I guess you may speak to it more in terms of whether it's actually an issue.
I think it will be an issue if you have a group that says, you know, I want it every Wednesday, I'm making up a date, every Wednesday, third Wednesday of every month for the next year, and here's my check. And then you get a group that wants to have grandma's birthday party on a Wednesday night that lives here, and they can't because it's reserved. So that, I mean, that, whether it happens or not, I have no idea, but I think that's, that's very likely to come up at some point.
Yeah.
I don't think we have Lori here, but Jack, how many times is this place rented?
We haven't opened it up to be rented.
Yeah, it's not open now, but the only request we've had for use of the facility since I've been here, it's a small sample, it's just a year and a couple of days, is one for a meeting. And once we told them there was fee for that, they said, our neighbor has a three-car heating garage, we'll use that.
So to answer your question, I mean, for a very many number of years, the city was operating under the incorrect assumption, because they were told by the county that they couldn't use this facility for anything more than what the seniors used it for. So if the seniors met once a month for four hours and it couldn't be used for non-senior uses any more than four hours, that ended up being incorrect. We got written documentation from HHS, is something that was the very first thing I did when I came on council. And it opened us, opened up the opportunity to use this for the community however we wanted to, and also for the city. And then COVID happened, and it was shut down for three years because nobody was meeting and blah, blah, blah. So when, when we were past all of that, then it was, well, let's come up with a policy. And it sort of died by lack of interest. And also, I'll be honest, Elizabeth wasn't wild about having it open to the public. So I think it's great that you're bringing it up again. I would like to see it be a community asset and be used by, by the community. And so we just, I think we need to develop a policy so that it's administered consistently, and everybody knows sort of what the rules are and what the costs are and things like that. So, but that's why we haven't had this come up before is because we kind of, because of COVID and because we just never finished this piece of work.
And I do take that back. The Lions do use the facility-
For their pancake breakfast.
-pancake breakfasts once a month, so. And they have used it for a meeting occasionally, but they usually do all their stuff over in the Public Works Building now.
So I feel like that that was donated, right, by seniors? Was there no-
No, no. There was, there was an HHS grant that was administered through the county, and the terms of the, the terms of the grant were misunderstood by the person in the county. And so what she had told Elizabeth was if you use it for anything more than what's getting used for seniors, you have to pay back all of the grant money, and it was $100,000 and some odd change, right?
True.
And that ended up being incorrect information. So we got a letter from HHS clarifying that it's ours, free and clear, that there's no need to repay the grant money. And it opened it up, opened up the opportunity to let others other than the seniors use it. At the same time, the seniors were looking at not meeting as often, but they, you know, they, they had put a lot of, of their own effort and investment into that. They had shares and things like that. And so we crafted an agreement that basically said we would call it the senior community, senior slash community center, so that it was always clear that seniors were an important part of the use of that. And we would give them priority use. And I think they used to meet on a Tuesday afternoon, and that might have been partly baked in or baked into that agreement. And then there was some language in there about assets and who owned what and things like that. So, but then again, COVID, COVID happened, and when that was over, that group had sort of, I don't want to say fallen apart, but they, a number of them weren't there anymore. But now I hear that they're interested in reusing it and regaining their group, which is, I think is great. But I think we also have the opportunity to just make this a community asset to everybody. So there you go. That's the history.
Appreciate the history. And like you had said earlier, I'd heard, I heard Administrator Mersko kind of scoff at people wanting to use it or anyone ever wanting to use it. But I feel like it needs to be an asset that's available to our community. And going back to, I would like to have our community of Columbus have the priority first. I do appreciate you bringing that up. And maybe if there's taste, I know you said you both can go either way, Ron, where are you at on this? Do we want it just for our community? I mean, it's not a huge space, you know? People are always looking for places, the whole birthday parties. We got a beautiful park across the street that could be utilized with that.
Well, and I think, I think, you know, what I've heard people say, too, is, you know, if they were having, you know, a family get-together reunion or something like that in the summertime, then they might also want to have, you know, to use the outside picnic round or picnic tables and things like that. So I think there's a number of things we should look at related to this. And we don't have to decide it tonight, but maybe we can provide our input. And then when you get, find that document that guides the use for the seniors, and we can look at a revised version.
And what I would like to do, and I'm going to retract my offer to bring it back at the next meeting for approval, but this will be on our work meeting for February, so we can go over any changes, correct them then, and then have it brought before the first council meeting in February.
Sounds good to me.
So we're pushing it to the next meeting?
No, because there's a lot of stuff we probably need to do, and there'll probably be more corrections. I'd like to start making some of these changes now to this. Then we can bring it and discuss it at our work meeting, so that way we can make any further changes, finish it up, and bring it to our first meeting in February council meeting for consideration of approval.
So I'd be willing to make the motion with the amendment to only have residents at this time. So-
We really wouldn't need a motion on that. That's more direction at this time.
Okay.
Because we're not taking any form of action on this, so we can certainly incorporate that into our changes in this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, and given that consensus or direction, I want to look at, like, for instance, the parks are used by others outside the community. And so whether you can have a priority or an absolute ban on, you know, whether it is, whether it's legal to have a prohibition on outside members of the public using public facilities.
Well, and if you find that, then maybe there's a way to word in the prioritization of residents.
Absolutely.
If there happens to be a conflict between a resident and a non-resident.
Okay. So I have a sense of the direction. Thank you.
Oh, which one were we?
Number nine.
Number nine, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And we did pull item number eight, and I just want to go with that real quick. This relates to the companion animal care service that we're doing on an impound agreement. We did make some progress with them, and they have agreed to have the residents that have a dog impounded come to the city to pay for that, so we don't have to be a collection agency. However, there's a few little details we have to work out with them, and one of them would be what happens if the people want to come on a Saturday to pay. So what we're going to go back to them is see if we get an extension on that five-day hold period to cover weekends and holidays.
Good point.
Yep.
So we'll get those done hopefully by next meeting and see if we can reintroduce that there then for approval. So with that, the last thing we have here under item C under presentations is we need to set the date for the 2025 local board of appeals and equalization meeting. We've been requested by the county to submit two dates as our choices for the meeting. Both of our choices must fall between the dates of April 14th, 2024, I mean, 2025 through May 5th, 2025. Any weeknight within that date range is available except for April the 16th. Minnesota law requires that at least one member of each board must have completed training provided the Department of Revenue within the last four years. Two of our members have completed that training, and that is Councilmember Haglen and Councilmember, or Mayor Hanigraff. I would also encourage the others to take the training. Number one, because this is a real good way to learn the process and what goes on with LBA and E. It can be done online, and it's about a 45-minute to an hour course. If you're interested, I can send you links to that.
Please.
But in order to be certified or qualified for this year, it must be done by February the 1st. So Jennifer and Rob, I'll send you the information, and if you can take it, it would be great. And if nothing else, you learn a lot about it.
Thank you.
So what we would recommend is our date for the meeting be April the 15th, and our alternate date be April the 29th. And we would submit these to the county for their approval. So I would ask that you consider a motion to set the dates of April 15th for the local board of appeals and equalization meeting, and April the 29th, 2025, for the alternate meeting date.
So this is Janet. I have a conflict on those dates, but, I mean, I don't have to be here. If, I mean, I know I don't need to be here, but if we could consider the 17th and the 24th, does that work?
That'll work, too.
I, too, have a conflict on the 15th.
Okay. That's why we're asking for the-
Local union meeting, yeah.
So the 17th is on a Thursday.
Yep.
And the 24th is on Thursday. Does that work for everyone?
You say 24th?
Yep.
That's okay.
So then I would move to approve the date of April 17th and April 24th, 2025, sorry, the date of April 17th, 2025, and the alternate date of April 24th, 2025, for the 2025 local board of appeals and equalization meeting.
Rob, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing now will take a vote?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Ron, aye. Excuse me.
Done.
Apologize. It's not contagious. At least that's what the doctor said today. We go on to number D, right?
Correct.
Okay. City engineer. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The one item I have tonight is to renew the professional services agreement. There's no changes in the section language or the duties. The four revisions that were made were primarily dealing with address, the designation of the personnel, the hourly rates, and the term dates for another three-year period. With that, I'd stand for any questions the council may have.
I have a question. So I looked over this agreement, and I was curious, there's a clients' responsibility section, but there is not a consultant responsibility section. There's obviously the services that you're providing.
Right.
And what I'm thinking about in particular, and Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we had some problems with timely invoicing in the past, and I would like to see that addressed in here, that we have a requirement to get invoices in within, pick a date, number of days, number of weeks, whatever, after services are rendered, so that we stay on track with it financially. That would be one thing that I would add. And if you had a section that said consultant responsibilities, you could put it under that, or you could put it wherever else it fits.
I wasn't aware of that. We can certainly, we're agreeable to that.
Okay. I don't know if there's any, any other responsibilities that anybody else would come up with, but that was the only one I was aware of. Okay. Well, I just made Cheryl happy. I got a big smile.
In order so we don't have to bring this back, would you want to approve that with us adding that condition in there and make it-
Yes. So then I would, yep, I would move to approve the proposal for the professional services contract with Bolton &amp; Mink as presented in item D1 attachment 1 with the addition of a clause addressing timely invoicing as their responsibility.
And we would like to use the term of 15 days. Does that work, Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Jenny. I can second.
So we got a motion and a second.
It's a second? Oh, I didn't hear you, Jenny. Okay. Any discussion? Comments? None? Take a vote?
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Ron, aye. That all we have, Brian?
That's all. Thank you.
We go to our counselor there.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, you have our engagement letter. This is how we presented our engagement on an annual basis. Two additional tweaks that were addressing a desire to have more time. to have more time with the attorney under the retainer. So we encourage council members, staff to call when they have questions. We've increased the retainer amount by $500 a month to incorporate that. But within that then would be all routine phone calls, any legal review that's less than an hour, and, and all of these council meetings, regular council meetings that we attend. So that's our proposal. The idea is to create a incentive for staff and council members to call when they have questions or concerns, so they can get them addressed timely. The other thing that we've done, and I think this will be a help to applicants, we've added a schedule of fixed fees. And so you'll see things like development agreements, easement agreements, stormwater agreements. The creation and preparation of those would be under a fixed fee. The only exception to that would be sometimes we get, you know, it always takes another attorney to drive up the fees, right? So we get another attorney representing a landowner calling and spending hours on, on documents. That's, that would be billed hourly. But the actual preparation of the document, which is fairly non-controversial, would be under a fixed fee schedule. That would be something that could be published here at the office, and so applicants would know kind of what they're getting into before they undertake those applications.
One thing I'd like to comment on that flat fixed fee schedule, it gives us a much better opportunity to identify all the cost of these permits, variances, land use agreements upfront so that the people that apply for these don't have any surprises down the road. So it's going to be a great use in us being able to identify most of the upfront cost a lot easier than we have in the past.
I like that. I have, I have a question, two questions. Is there somewhere in this agreement that's going to define what you just said was included in the retainer?
It's in the letter, but, but the thing that I said, which is not in the letter, is review under it less than an hour will be in the retainer. So I'm happy to add that. That's my intent. And I've reviewed this with Megan Rogers, the Assistant City Attorney, and she's comfortable with it as well.
Yeah, and I didn't see that, that the questions could be from staff and city council members, which I think is great because having, having had my hand slapped in the past, not by Jack, but prior, like, you can't call the attorney because it costs us as much per hour. I'm really glad that now we don't have that restriction, and any one of us can do that, and the staff can as well. So that's great.
I'll add both of those, and we'll send out an updated letter based on your comments.
And then my second question is, I know a lot of time gets spent when we do ordinance work. Is that just an hourly because it's too hard to put a flat fee on that, or?
It, it is, and we're cognizant of that. You know, we actually, with the discussions with the city administrator, we wrote off some time this year because some matters took much longer than we anticipated. What I'm proposing to do, and I'll be happy to add to this to the letter, I think I actually did, but we're always happy to provide estimates. And so maybe when we start a new ordinance project, like the stormwater ordinance or.
Cannabis.
Cannabis. We can, just as the engineers do, we can provide an estimate of the work, and that'll create a little more uniformity around how those projects.
I, I really like that idea. I think that's great. Thank you.
And we appreciate the city attorney working with us to keep our legal costs under control. And they've made a lot of good steps in this direction, and we appreciate their cooperation in working with us too.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Want to make a motion? I'm moved to approve the letter of engagement for the Professional Services of Larkin Hoffman for the 2025 as presented in item D slash two, attachment one.
With the changes that we just discussed?
We did?
Yeah.
What did we change?
I can recap them if you like.
Yes.
Oh, I mean, add everything you said.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to add a statement that staff and city council members are free to call us under the retainer file, and that the retainer file includes any legal review that takes less than an hour of time, and that at the outset of projects like ordinance work, we'll give an estimate of time for those projects.
Okay, ditto.
Yep.
All right.
I second.
Any other discussion on it?
No.
We have a second on this motion?
I just did.
Oh, okay.
Jenny, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Ron, aye. Finally, we get to D three. You have anything to report tonight, Jennifer?
I have nothing. I just want to thank you all again for being here.
Thank you. Rob?
Yeah, just a big thank you to the community for support through this last fall's election. Immense support, fantastic voter turnout for all, good numbers. So thanks to all the voters for driving up here, early voting. Any resident that's got concerns, my, my cell phone number is on the website. So give me a call. Thank you.
Janet?
I will also extend my thanks to everybody also for being here. It's, it's really nice to see faces out there because normally we don't. So thank you, and please continue to come because we really do care what you think. And we don't know that unless, unless you, you come and, and tell us. The other thing I'll just quickly mention is that I attended a January 2nd Sunrise River WMO meeting. So I'm just reporting back that we're starting work on the 2026 budget. It's looking to be coming in under what was outlined in the watershed plan. So we're meeting again around the middle of February, and we should have a more firm number, but it's, it's likely going to be right around $50,000, which is right in line with what we've been paying and less than what's in the plan. The other thing I was supposed to let you know, Jack, is that 27, 28, 29 are going to be substantially more, and that is because we'll have to do our work to do our 10-year plan. And the estimate, estimated cost for the 10-year plan is about, close to $50,000. So it's like when we do our comp plan, there's a lot of engineering and other legal stuff that goes into it. So I don't think it's going to be $50,000 going forward.
No, and, and we realize that those watershed management organization budgets are not linear. They go very to the costs that are associated with the work going on that year, so.
Right, and, and that's one of the things we talked about too, is, is from this point on, building in, you know, a, a set amount towards the next 10-year plan so that we don't have those, those big fluctuations. It makes it easier for everybody. The last thing I just wanted to mention, which is a big win for them, is that they submitted a grant to Bowser, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, for just under a quarter of a million dollars to do a project in Isanti County, but it affects lakes, Martin Lake, Typo Lake. And it is to take a ditch, county ditch that runs through there and create kind of a, a pond on the side of it so that a lot of the phosphorus and other sediments and other things that have been getting into the Sunrise River and then follows, flows into that chain of lakes will settle out there. And they had estimates about how much phosphorus reduction and sediment reduction and, and other nutrients would be captured that way. It's on private land. The person who owns the land is putting in $22,000 of their own money to make this happen. So it's, that's a really good-sized grant for an organization this small, and it's going to do good things for lakes that I think a lot of people in Columbus utilize, even though they're not in Columbus. So I thought that was, that was worthy of mentioning because I, I think that this is the kind of work I was hoping that board would take on, and they've really, they have done that. So, and it's really big kudos to Jamie Sherbonne, who's the administrator and wrote the grant for it. That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
And I have nothing to report, other than the election's over. So let's all relax and hopefully we can get along, and this, this process will go. And like everybody says, we never see three people out there at night, or one or two. We have some that come all the time, but thank you for coming tonight. We'll go on to item number four, the Personnel Committee report?
No, no report.
No report? Planning Commission report? There is none? Right, Jack?
Correct.
Park Board report? There's nothing to report on that. Public Works report?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't have anything to report, but I'd like to welcome Jennifer Latton to the board. Looking forward to working with her. Congratulate you for winning the mayor's seat. And congratulations to Rob for winning his seat. I, I throw this out to every new council that if it ever snows, which I'll be honest with you, I hope it doesn't, I welcome any one of you to come on a snowplow ride with the drivers and kind of get a feel for what we deal with out there. Some days it's really good, some days it's not. But that just, you know, anytime, call. And, you know, there's not really, it might be 3:00 in the morning, but if you're, if you're ready, we're willing. So I just throw that out there. That's all I got.
Well, I was lucky enough to get one on 3:00 in the morning calls. It was a lot of fun. But I think we also should say that you can ride with a deputy still. If you, if you talk to Jessica, they'll take you and see what, you know. I gone with Chris before a couple of times, and it's, it's good to get out there and see what they do. So thanks, JW. City Administrators report?
The only thing I have to report is there's going to be a local government officials meeting in January. I believe it's on the 29th. I'll have more details to send out. So if you're interested in going, let me know. I'll make sure you get the information. Either you can make the reservation yourself, or I can make them all. And for your information, Jennifer, this is the local government officials of Anoka County get together generally once every two months. They have an agenda and topics that we talk about common problems. They have a meal. They vary the location. It's, I believe this next time it's going to be at the Bunker Lake Boulevard facility over on Hanson. So just let me know if you want to go. And also for you, the League of Minnesota Cities has training for newly elected officials. I would recommend that very highly, and I'll send you the information on that if you'd like to attend. And you can do it online.
Thank you so much.
No, it's in person. It's in person in Bloomington. Some of it's on, there's some online stuff first, and then it's over a weekend in person.
Yeah, and they generally encourage you to do the online stuff first before you.
Right, right, yep.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may interject, I, I will also make my offer that I make every two years when new council members come and we do it. We've done it as a work session for the full body. I have a very short, you know, half-hour, one-hour program on kind of key, key issues for elected officials. It's a nice refresher for everybody. It's on things like, you know, the quorum, the voting, the Roberts Rules, open meeting law, all of that. So if, if I'm invited to a work session, I'll certainly show up and do that for you.
Thank you.
What are you doing in February, Bill?
Let me check. I think I can make it.
Okay.
All right.
Can I, can I ask Bill a question? I just saw that the league was putting out their Cities on the Hill date already. And I know we kind of got an early start on our legislative, but I haven't, we haven't talked about it since then. And I also know that things are kind of way up in the air with the state. So maybe at February, we could talk about that too, at the workshop?
Yep, and I'll check with Margaret as well.
Okay, we're at item E on the agenda. We're to the announcements, Planning Commission meeting on January 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. EDA Workshop meeting, January 16th, 2025, at 5:30 PM. EDA Regular Meeting, January 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Parks Board meeting, January 21, 2025, at 5:30 PM here at City Hall. And City Council meeting on January 22nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
Before you adjourn, I have a question. Were we supposed to adopt our calendar?
Nope, yep, we dropped it. Where was that?[1724.33]